To the November 1st Council Meeting, if you'd please stand, Councilman Walt Polcock is going to lead us in the flag salute.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first presentation this evening is a proclamation for Purple Heart City. I'd like to call up Michael Wezar, Commander of the American Legion Post 299, Dennis Marillo, Commander of Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 11546, and Ted Bistarki, City of Chino Community Services Manager. Hi, how are you? Good to see you. Okay, and the proclamation reads, whereas the citizens of the City of Chino have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community and the armed forces. Veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. The contributions and sacrifices of the men and women in the City of Chino who served in the armed forces have been vital in defending the hard-won freedoms and liberties of our Constitution that are treasured by our citizens. The Purple Heart is awarded to those members of the armed services of the United States that have been wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy or posthumously to the next of kin in the name of those killed in action or those who have died of their wounds in service to their country. On December 3rd, 2013, the City of Chino joined the Purple Heart City Program, which contributes, constitutes a series of cities along the Purple Heart Trail that honor those who gave so much in the perseverance of all of our freedoms. In reaffirming our commitment to honor Purple Heart recipients as well as our appreciation and admiration for their sacrifices, this proclamation solidifies our community's gratefulness to their service. And whereas to show that we proudly stand as a Purple Heart City, three signs proudly displaying this designation have been placed in our community. One at our community building is part of the Chino Liberty Courtyard, and the other two on a prominent median along Central Avenue, right in front of City Hall. And whereas this proclamation will be brought back every year going forward to remember the sacrifices made by so many and to reaffirm our commitment as a community to them. Now therefore, I, Unisemilo, Mayor of the City of Chino, do hereby proclaim and reaffirm the City of Chino's proud commitment to be a Purple Heart City along the Purple Heart Trail to honor the service and sacrifice made to preserve the freedoms we all enjoy today.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of the American Legion Chino Post 299. It's an honor, and the membership thanks you for that. And as veterans, we always continue to want to be able to give back, and we make that pledge to give back to the city and to the veterans and to their families.
Thank you. Let's go to two things to say. A lot of people gave their lives for this country. That's what Memorial Day is for. But a lot of guys came back wounded, and we're forgetting them. They're in the hospitals and the convalescent homes, and we need to keep remembering them. We cannot let them out of our minds because the sacrifices keep coming and coming. So we need to do this all the time. And also, when they have this ceremony, this coming thing over at the Community Center in Chino, we need to get more people there, would they? Veterans, we need to get more people there. Because we say, I see the numbers going down and down and down. We need to get them going up and up and up, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your continued support. The Purple Heart City is a tremendous commitment on our city and continuing to recognize all of our veterans throughout the years and as we continue to move forward. We also established a page, webpage on our city website. That's cityochino.com/purpleheart, where residents who have family members that are Purple Heart recipients can go on. There's a fillable form. They can fill it out, submit a photo, and we have a page that has the recipients that they will forever be listed on our city website. So please take a look at that, see that. We encourage you to do that, and the mayor will speak a little bit. Our Veterans Day event is around the corner. And thank you so very much for this, and we'll keep continuing to progress in recognizing our veterans.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. And I know, I hope I'm speaking for everyone, that we truly, truly appreciate the sacrifices that the veterans have made and continue to make, especially the ones that have come back wounded. If it weren't for our veterans, we wouldn't have the freedoms that we have now. So thank you very much for being here today. Next, we have Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day, November 8th, 2022. I'd like to call up Chris Corbin, Chino Police Department Professional Services Manager. Whereas the Chino Police Department and law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend on law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them with vital services. The Chino Police Department Records Unit and Support Personnel throughout the department are crucial to help identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers. And whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in identifying and tracking felons, maintaining accurate crime statistics, and improving apprehension strategies. It's important to recognize California's law enforcement records and support personnel for their valued contributions to our law enforcement system and to public safety. The State Executive Board of the California Law Enforcement Association of Record Supervisors has designated Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Now therefore, I, Unisemilo, Mayor of the City of Chino, in honor of the records and support personnel of the Chino Police Department, do hereby recognize Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day.
I'm Jamie Kunkam, the Record Supervisor.
I'm Ashley, a Records Technician.
And I am Brisa, and I'm also a Records Technician.
I'll just speak for us all. It is an honor to be recognized for the work we do every day, so thank you.
I do have to say, the personnel that we have in records, they do an incredible job. I mean, our officers are out there arresting the bad people, but a lot of times, these crimes couldn't be solved if it weren't for the people in records. They do an incredible job, an absolute phenomenal job. There have been cases that were solved that I honestly thought were impossible, absolutely impossible. But you know the old saying, "They're always going to get their man"? I'll tell you what. The partnership between the personnel here and the police department is absolutely incredible, and I wish the word would get out to the criminal element. Don't come to Chino because you're going to get busted, right? Congratulations, ladies. Thank you very much for being here. Next, we have Business of the Month Award, October 2022. Mortgage companies provide valuable services that we may not need every day, but when we do, it's great to know that there are quality providers right here in Chino. For the month of October, we are highlighting one of these local companies that provides excellent service throughout the year. October's Business of the Month recipient is Golden Empire Mortgage. I would like to invite Branch Manager Eric Hasenhoff to join me up front as we learn about his company. Eric, would you like to bring other people up with you? Have them come. I don't think they're willing. Future of the business. Golden Empire Mortgage, or JEM for short, has been a local go-to mortgage company for the last 15 years. JEM orders, offers, I'm sorry, a wide variety of loan programs and most current rates available, along with a seasoned customer support team. They have received five-star reviews across the board from local customers who commend the branch on their friendly service and great communication. Not only are they a trusted support to their customers, but they are also great supporters of the community. JEM's branch manager, Eric, served on the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors for six years and is a past chairman of the board. They continue to support the chamber with sponsorships and time donated. Furthermore, JEM uses almost all local vendors to accomplish their day-to-day business. As residents of Chino with children in our schools and programs, JEM also scores major points for their support of local sports. They've given back to Chino All-American, Chino Pop Warner Football, Chino Hills Junior All-American, and Don Lugo Volleyball and Basketball, or Baseball. Now, please join me in congratulating JEM Mortgage for being an October 2022 Business of the Month. I have this plaque for you.
I know, thank you, I appreciate it. It's an honor to actually be selected for the Business of the Month. And you know, we've been here for years intentionally because of our city and how close-knit we are. We wouldn't have it any other way. My son goes to school here. Most of our clients are from around here. And it's just a pleasure to be part of the community and help serving our local city and communities and helping people realize the path to homeownership and also helping people arrange finances. So thank you, guys, and thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And you need to tell us your son's name.
This is Ian Hasenhoff, and Ian goes to Allegiant Steam Academy. He's a lean and mean Chino Hills Junior All-American football player who's currently benched because he has a knee injury, but hopefully he's back in the game. But he's the future of the mortgage company. That or a doctor, he's got two options.
And he's so embarrassed right now. Ian, would you like to say a few words? Thank you for coming up. It's your chance, it's your chance. You're welcome. Next, we have Business of the Month Award, November 2022. Oftentimes, we drive throughout the City of Chino and notice a building with a name on it and think to ourselves, "I wonder what they do." Today's honoree happens to be one of those amazing Chino businesses that provides products and services that change the world. For the month of November 2022, we would like to recognize NDRC Amphastar Pharmaceuticals Incorporated as our Business of the Month. Will the representative for NDRC Ampha... That's a mouthful. Amphastar Pharmaceuticals, Richard Pham and Dan Dishner, please join me up front. A Chino-based business for 26 years, NDRC is a subsidiary of Amphastar Pharmaceuticals and functions to conduct preliminary pilot scale and pre-clinical studies for new drugs and complex generic drugs as well as new formulation development. The Chino facility has several advanced instruments centered on analytic testing, in vitro, in vitro, in vivo testing, and formulation studies. NDRC is committed to its employees as they have generously assisted employees facing hardships, be it buying their custodian a new car or providing unique hardship allowances. They have demonstrated their commitment to the greater community by supporting the Red Cross during times of major natural disasters and donating face masks to hospitals and first responders during the onset of the pandemic. Drawing NDRC to the region is Chino's safe, vibrant, and peaceful community, where commerce is welcome to operate, and the City of Chino's policies have not imposed an encumbrance to leading scientific discoveries and innovations. NDRC is currently developing a first interchangeable biosimilar insulin made here in the U.S. Likewise, you might have used their products such as Primatene Mist, the only FDA-approved over-the-counter asthma rescue inhaler. Across the nation, millions of patients at the hospital and clinical settings rely on their products and scientific achievements. Let's congratulate the NDRC Ampha... Amphastar Pharmaceuticals for being innovative in scientific discovery and for being our November 2022 Business of the Month. And I'd like to present you with one of our framed certificates. Let's give them a hand.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We're greatly honored for receiving this award for the month of November. I would like to say that NDRC New Drug Research Center, actually, that's what it stands for, Amphastar Pharmaceuticals, has been here since the '90s, and we've been very supportive and very thankful for the support that we received. Back when we first started, you know, we were facing troubles and concerns about, you know, our research and development progress and how, you know, there may be some troubles. But we've been always very thankful of the council and the mayor, the previous mayor, and the longstanding tradition of the city's support. There's been so much innovation that we've achieved, whether it's achieving the first generic of Lovinox, which is a very highly purified, in this case, almost a biosimilar, to a generic, essentially a generic insulin, which you have heard in the news is very highly politicized in our current environment. And first of all, we would like to announce that, you know, we're proudly made in America. Actually, in fact, Amphastar stands for American Pharmaceutical Star. So that's where we're at, and we're proud to have roots here in Chino. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, I was one of the original employees at Amphastar. So our original building is here in Chino, and we have converted that into an R&amp;D facility. And there's a lot of great work happening in that facility that's leading to saving patients money because generic drugs are the future, or, you know, that's the best way to save money is through generic drugs. And, you know, our company focuses on very complex generic drugs, ones that other companies just won't make because they're too difficult to technically achieve. So we're very happy to be part of this city, and we thank you for this recognition.
Well, thank you for being part of Chino. We have so many outstanding companies in Chino, it's really incredible. Next is our Mayor's Home Beautification Award for November. I'd like to call up John Mothershed. Is he here this evening? Okay, it doesn't seem like we didn't get an RSVP back. Or Suzanne Batista? Okay, neither one apparently were able to attend. There's a picture on the prompter of their beautiful home. They're at 4400 Philadelphia, space 249. Very nicely done mobile home. And we will make sure to get them their certificate and the home beautification pins and pencils and all the rest of the stuff, as well as the yard sign. We'll get that to them. Next, this is going to be fun. Recognition of the Strategic Plan Work Group Participants. I'd like to call back up Chris Corbin, Chino Police Department Professional Services Manager, and all of the members of the Strategic Plan Work Group. Come on up. This evening, the City Council and I would like to recognize a group of employees that have volunteered to work on an important project that will impact the city for years to come. This group, which includes representatives from each of the city's seven departments, started meeting regularly in 2018 to draft a new strategic plan to replace the last one, which was adopted in 2000. After reviewing the prior version, obtaining input from the executive management team and the direction from council and priorities, the strategic plan was adopted by the City Council in 2021 and published into this document right here. The work group then conducted a survey to assess the areas in which the strategic plan was being successfully implemented and identify areas for improvement. Based on that input, this group recommended the creation of an organizational leadership team composed of city supervisors and managers to collaborate on addressing these needs. The work group also organized the first meeting of the OLT in August and are now working on establishing a new employee orientation program to be kicked off next year. These individuals have done all of this in addition to their regular job duties. The group identified themselves as ambassadors of the strategic plan who engage city employees by facilitating, encouraging, and promoting the city's mission, vision, and organizational values so that each employee understands their role and contributes to the plan's successful implementation. For their leadership, we'd like to present each of them with a Strategic Plan Ambassador 2022 Award. Okay, I will be calling individuals Sylvia Avalos, Community Services, and each of these read, "In appreciation of the initiative and leadership that you have demonstrated, this strategic plan is becoming part of the city's fabric, culture, and future. Thank you for representing your department and colleagues with enthusiasm and creativity." Here's a certificate, and then... Well, we're kind of tied to cows, right? So we have this little statue of a cow with their name and strategic ambassador 2022 on it. Sylvia, you're welcome. Okay, oh-oh. Pat? Cassio... Cassiopeia, I'm sorry. Your certificate and your cow. Your cow. Okay, next, we have Vivian Castro. And your cow. There you are, thank you. Chris Corbin. And the treasured cow. Lynette Cruz? Is she here, Lynette? Nope, Lynette's not here this evening. Yvette Gasko? Gasso. There you go. Uh-huh. She's a cow, you're welcome. Nikki Love? I love your name. There you go, thank you. Nicholas Marado? Nicholas, have to be official. Nick? You're welcome. Your cow. Keith Martinez? You're welcome. Thank you. Debbie Pacheco? You're welcome. Linda Reich? You even get a cow. You're welcome. Angela Robles? Just can go on your shelf, right? Ryan Shumway? This man's so critical. He keeps all the computers running. And for those of us dependent on them, you know how critical that is. Thank you, Ryan. Oh, Marcia Ariaso couldn't be here today, so we'll get hers also.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the working group, we'd like to start by thanking our city manager, Linda Reich. She was one of the original members of the working group with us, and she's supported this effort through into her new position as city manager. Also, all the directors and executive management team because as this plan was put in place, it then had to be kicked off, and we had to work behind it, and the directors have done a very great job of actively promoting this plan. We're looking forward to our new role as a working group. We're going to be getting into developing a new employee orientation program so that new employees that come to Chino learn about our culture. They learn about our mission and our vision so that we can all operate in lockstep, going in the same direction, achieving our primary goal of providing the very best in customer service to our community. So thank you very much for this recognition. It's been an honor for all of us to have been a part of getting us to this point, and we're looking forward to seeing the momentum continue to build and the results of all that work.
And on behalf of the council, I want to thank you very, very much for all of your efforts. It's truly, truly appreciated. This plan is going to lead us into the future, and hopefully we'll all be on the same path and have the same goals in mind, which will make all of our lives a lot easier, right? So thank you all very much.
And there's one final thing. We have a small little gift for you. Yes, ma'am.
Is it a cow?
Might be.
Going to have to all get together somehow. Come crowd around. You can come on this side, I don't bite, I promise.
I have to bend.
You have to bend. Move over more, Ann? We got to move over more. She can't have the screen. The screen messes her up. How cool. Thank you all again. Prior to starting the council meeting, we did have a closed session, and I'd like to ask, excuse me, our attorney to report on the action that was taken.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Please bear with me as this is a rather lengthy report, but the City Council met in closed session, as announced by the mayor, and held a discussion on the following items as listed on the closed session portion of the agenda, beginning with item number one, conference with legal counsel, one item of anticipated litigation under the heading initiation of litigation. Following a discussion and briefing, the City Council, by motion of Mayor Protem Lucio, seconded by Councilmember Comstock and carried unanimously 5 to 0, the City Council agreed to enter into settlement agreements with the following entities, KV Homes, Lennar Homes of California, Lewis Management Company, Richmond American Homes, and Woodside Homes, to be ratified at the November 15th, 2022 City Council meeting. The settlements accomplish settlement of accessibility improvements required by the Americans with Disabilities Act on various tracts encompassed around the city. The structure requires that the improvements be broken down into improvements depending on the date of completion of the improvements, with the first category of improvements being those built from December 31st, 2016, or earlier. As to those improvements, the city agrees to accept the improvements without further action, either by the city or the developers, for the improvements. Item, category number two, are all of the improvements...
The celebration will include a flag ceremony, which includes a presentation of military branch flags by Chino families who have had family members actively serving in the military, as well as special guest speakers. For any questions or for more information, please call 909-334-3258. Also, as we will be honoring all of our veterans on Friday, November 11, please note that City Hall will be closed that day and will reopen on Monday, November 14 at its regular operating hours of 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Bark Around the Park. Additionally, please make sure you come out to our Bark Around Ayala Park on Saturday, November 12 at Ayala Park from 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. This is a free event that allows all participants to enjoy a variety of pet vendors, demonstrations, agility courses, pet adoptions, and even a dog fashion show. All dogs must be on leashes and owners must sign a waiver to participate. For more information, please call 909-334-3258 or visit www.cityofchino.org/healthychino. Election Day. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that next Tuesday, November 8, is Election Day. So please make sure you take the time to vote at your local polling place or send in your mail-in ballot before the end of the day. If you're unsure if you're registered to vote, please visit sbcountyelections.com/voterregistration or call the registrar or voter's office at 909-387-8300. Also, please note that Chino City Hall is a mail ballot drop-off location with boxes available to voters inside City Hall and on the west side of City Hall parking lot located near the Neighbor Activities Center. For more information regarding local polling places or City Hall mail-off drop locations, please call the City Clerk's Office at 909-334-3306. Next, we'd like to sadly adjourn in memory of Addison Conley, who passed away after a courageous battle with cancer. Addie, as she was affectionately known, was diagnosed with acute mylioid...mylioid? Mylioid? I think that's how it's pronounced. Leukemia in spring 2021. At just 17 years old, Addie demonstrated remarkable strength as the Conley family resolved to treat her illness with chemotherapy and a bone marrow transplant. Although the treatment ultimately could not stop the spread of the disease, Addie did not let this news prevent her from pursuing her personal goals. Addie carried on with fortitude and created a list of experiences she determined to have before the Lord called her home. Among others, this included Addie marrying her childhood sweetheart, graduating from high school early, and even being brought onstage during a Luke Combs concert. Addie's extraordinary courage, optimism, and perspective in the face of a terminal illness inspired people across the country. It was evident that she did not take this illness or let this illness define her. She reminded us the number of years we have on this earth is not necessarily important. Rather, it's our ability to show grace, love, and kindness with the time we have that matters and by that authentic measure. Addie certainly lived a full life. Her impact was on full display during a boat ride in Huntington Harbor that turned into an impromptu parade full of people inspired by Addie's resilience and strength. On behalf of the council and the entire Chino community, our prayers go out to the Conley family during this incredibly difficult time, and we pray the Conley family takes solace in knowledge that the impact Addie had on so many. I'm sure many of you followed her story on Facebook. It was even covered on several news stations. She was an incredibly brave young lady. It was just, it was truly a tragedy. Next on the agenda is public communication. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the council about issues that do not appear elsewhere. Our first written request is Jared Caballero from Cavalry Chapel, Chino Valley. Jared's going to lead us in an invocation, and I invite all those who would like to participate to please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Let us bow our hearts and pray. Father, we thank you for this evening, Lord. The opportunity we have to be here, Lord, with our mayor, with our council, with our city staff and city workers, with our first responders. We're so grateful for them, and we pray that you'd continue to have your hand upon each of them and their families tonight, Lord. We pray for all of us here, Lord, everyone watching, that you'd be with our families, God, that you draw us closer to you, Lord, draw us to you, Lord, even during these times that we're living in. We do lift up Addison's family, Lord, as they mourn, her loved ones as they mourn, Lord, that your hope and your strength and your peace and your comfort would be upon them, God. God, we just, we lift up this election that's coming, this coming week, this next week, Lord. We pray, Lord God, that it would be successful in every sense of the word, Lord, that everything would go smoothly, Lord, that, Lord, you would just give every worker that's involved, Lord, wisdom and strength that day, that you'd bring the community members out to vote, Lord, that this community, that everyone in the community would be represented, Lord, and that your will would be done, whatever your will is, that it would be done in our nation, in our states, in our cities, Lord. We lift up the city staff, Lord, that's here in this building, and their desire to execute the council's direction, Lord, to perfection, and we pray, Lord, for each and every staff member and their families, that you'd be with them, Lord, and help them in all that they do, and we thank you for them, Lord. We thank you, God, that last night we were able to celebrate time together with various festivities around the city and that everything went off wonderfully and safely, and we thank you for that, Lord. And so, God, just continue now tonight and bless this meeting and let your will be done and continue to bring unity to this council and let your will be done in all the matters at hand, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Jared. Next written request to speak is Melissa Campani from Supervisor Hagman's office.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor Lucio, council members, staff, and of course, community members. My name is Melissa Campani, and I am here representing your county supervisor Kurt Hagman, and he asked me to come share a couple of events with the public so that they can be sure and attend. The first event is a veteran claims event in honor of Veterans Day. This is going to be a very nice event because it's going to be close by. It will be held in Supervisor Hagman's local district office, which the location is 14010 City Center Drive. That is in Chino Hills. I also have a phone number in case anyone has any questions. It's 909-465-5265. The event itself will be held on November the 9th, which is a Wednesday from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So the county veteran service officers are coming to the office to help local constituents. They can answer questions about existing claims, conduct benefit assessment interviews, complete claim forms and paperwork, and issue San Bernardino County veteran ID cards. We do ask that you bring your Form DD to 14, and all services are provided free of charge. So really good event if you know any veterans who are struggling to get help with their benefits. It's a common problem, and we do hear that a lot. So that's going to be a nice event in November, and I hate to push ahead this fast, but coming up after that is December, and Supervisor Hagman will be hosting his annual Christmas open house, and this year it will be Thursday, December 8, from 5:30 to 7:30. And the address will be 14000 City Center Drive, and that is in Chino Hills. That is at the Chino Hills City Hall there in the foyer, the lobby area. And I have the same phone number if you have any questions, 909-465-5265. Appetizers and holiday cheer will be served. We are asking that if you'd like to come, and we'd love to have you attend, that you RSVP at supervisorhagman eventbrite.com. We just want to make sure we have enough holiday cheer for everyone so when they come, we can all have a good time. So thank you very much, and we hope to see you and community members from the city of Chino. Thank you.
Melissa, I have one quick question.
Yes.
In light of the gentlemen that were here this evening to receive the proclamation, do you get this veterans information to the VFW and the...
We do. I myself don't personally, but we do have someone who gets the information. But I do have some flyers if anyone here would like a flyer on the event or the Christmas open house. I have both flyers.
All right. Thank you very much. Next written request to speak is Julia Cabrera from the chamber.
Good evening, everybody, council, city staff, members of the public. I'm just here to announce some updates from Upskill Chino Valley, which is our economic development package, some public events that everyone should know about. The Kids Entrepreneur Fair will be taking place at the shops on November 5, the Saturday from 12, starting at 12:30 p.m. That's where we'll be having our Chino Valley Pitch Competition. That goes from 4 to 6 p.m. We have around 11 brave young kids who have a business idea that they're going to be pitching, and they have the opportunity to win up to $5,000 to help fund their business. So I encourage everyone to come out and see what, you know, things, what amazing things these kids are doing. I also want to encourage members of the public to reach out to the Chino Valley Chamber if they know a student in the Chino Valley who's looking for an internship, an apprenticeship, or someone who's looking for a job placement. We have a very active job board, and we have one staff member in our team named Nicole Tabatabai, whose whole focus is placing students in internships and apprenticeships with local businesses in the Chino Valley. And some other updates, we had our Business Expo two Saturdays ago. That was fully sold out. We had 70 businesses from Chino and Chino Hills present, interacting with the public at the shops. Everyone said they had a good time, and I'm glad they did. We also had a student workshop that was going on at the same time at our Satellite Office in Chino Hills, also in the shops, in Tailored Space, which is a second-story office space. We had around 19 students show up, and they all learned about business margins, and it looked like they had fun and learned something about that. And last thing I want to share is that the first day for Chino Valley Leadership Collaborative will be taking place this Friday at our Chino Valley office. Christopher Flores will be participating and going through the program, so I'm very grateful and happy that you're going to be there with us. I know all of our business members and other members from our community are excited to have you. We also have two reps from Chino PD and one from Chino Valley Fire. Do with that information what you like.
Competition.
We're at 24 spots, so there's still one more spot. I'm just saying, throwing it out there. And I want to say thank you to Chino City staff for working with us and me to help us plan our day in Chino, which is coming up. So I want to shout out to Ariana, she's not here, but I just want to say thank you for all your support with us, the chamber, this program. It means a lot to myself and Zeb and our business members and other organizations in the community that we work with as well. So I'm done talking. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. One last thing. As of today, we have 471 members part of our chamber, and 23 of those members are ambassadors, so that means they're going out in the community, spreading the word about what we do and engaging with new businesses that come to Chino Valley.
Fantastic. Thank you, Julia. Those are the only written requests I have to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seen none, then we will move on to our consent calendar. Do any council members wish to have any items pulled? Okay, seen none, then I would entertain a motion in a second, please. Motion from Mayor Potem Lucio, second from Councilmember Pocock, and consent calendar passes unanimously. Under new business, item number 13, request for relief from the provisions of Title 12 of the Municipal Code, 5135 Walnut Avenue, PL 22-0053. This item is to adopt Resolution Number 2022-072 to approve a modification pursuant to Section 12.08.070 of the Chino Municipal Code exempting the homeowner at 5135 Walnut Avenue from the requirements to construct public improvements along their frontage. Staff report this evening will be provided by our Assistant City Engineer, Jesus Placencia.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. On August 17, 2022, the city received a preliminary review application from Potter's Wheel Assembly Church to consider a proposed change to the existing use of the property located at 5135 Walnut Avenue. This property is located on the south side of Walnut Avenue between Telephone Avenue and Central Avenue. The proposed change consists of converting the existing 2,685 square-foot preschool to a 3,426 square-foot church. As part of the city's preliminary review of the project, it was determined that the right-of-way and public improvements along the property frontage on Walnut Avenue are not at their ultimate location per the city's general plan. Chapter 12.04 of the City Municipal Code indicates that right-of-way dedication shall be required upon issuance of any building permit, and Chapter 12.08 of the Municipal Code indicates that right-of-way dedication, excuse me, and Chapter 12.08 requires non-residential property owners to construct public improvements along their property frontage when they conduct any development activity and public improvements do not currently exist or are deficient. Therefore, if the church were to proceed with the project, they would be required by the Municipal Code to dedicate 10 feet of additional right-of-way along the property frontage and widen the south side of Walnut Avenue along the property frontage by an additional seven feet, plus install new curb, gutter, and sidewalk per the city's general plan. On September 12, 2022, the city received a letter from the senior pastor of Potter's Wheel Assembly requesting an exemption to construct the public improvements pursuant to Section 12.08.070 of the Municipal Code. This section of the code states that in unusual conditions or when compliance with the provisions of the code would constitute an extreme hardship or would be impractical, the City Council may, upon written request of the property owner, modify the requirements contained in the Municipal Code as they deem fit. The senior pastor stated in the letter that the cost of constructing the public improvements would be unattainable, would be an unattainable financial burden, and would nullify their plans to own a place of worship in the city of Chino. City staff has calculated an initial estimate of a... Staff report this evening will be provided by our Assistant City Engineer, Jesus Placencia.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. On August 17, 2022, the city received a preliminary review application from Potter's Wheel Assembly Church to consider a proposed change to the existing use of the property located at 5135 Walnut Avenue. This property is located on the south side of Walnut Avenue between Telephone Avenue and Central Avenue. The proposed change consists of converting the existing 2,685 square foot preschool to a 3,426 square foot church. As part of the city's preliminary review of the project, it was determined that the right-of-way and public improvements along the property frontage on Walnut Avenue are not at their ultimate location per the city's general plan. Chapter 12.04 of the City Municipal Code indicates that right-of-way dedication shall be required upon issuance of any building permit. And Chapter 12.08 of the Municipal Code indicates that right-of-way dedication, excuse me, and, and Chapter 12.08 requires non-residential property owners to construct public improvements along their property frontage when they conduct any development activity, and public improvements do not currently exist or are deficient. Therefore, if the church were to proceed with the project, they would be required by the municipal code to dedicate 10 feet of additional right-of-way along the property frontage and widen the south side of Walnut Avenue along the property frontage by an additional seven feet, plus install new curb, gutter, and sidewalk per the city's general plan. On September 12, 2022, the city received a letter from the Senior Pastor of Potter's Wheel Assembly requesting an exemption to construct the public improvements pursuant to Section 12.08.070 of the Municipal Code. This section of the code states that in unusual conditions or when compliance with the provisions of the code would not, would constitute an extreme hardship or would be impractical, the city council may, upon written request of the, um, of the property owner, modify the requirements contained in the Municipal Code as they deem fit. The senior pastor stated in the letter that the cost of constructing the public improvements would be unattainable, would be an unattainable financial burden, and would nullify their plans to own a place of worship in the city of Chino. City staff has calculated an initial estimate of approximately $30,500 for the cost of constructing the public improvements, which is subject to change based on labor and material costs at the time of construction. The block of Walnut Avenue where this property is located is not consistent with the ultimate street design in the city's general plan, which stipulates that the existing total right-of-way increased from 68 feet to 88 feet, and the total curb-to-curb roadway width increased from 50 feet to 68 feet. If the church were required to construct the public improvements to their ultimate location, including widening Walnut Avenue by seven feet, the street improvements would be only partial, and there would be a sawtooth effect along the street since the neighboring properties to the east and west would remain in their existing condition. The partial improvement of the roadway could also result in stormwater management issues due to the offset location of curb and gutter, as well as traffic circulation issues due to the implementation of temporary striping and roadway pavement transitions. For these reasons, city staff concluded that widening Walnut Avenue solely along the property frontage is considered impractical at this time. It would be best for these improvements to be completed in the future as part of a larger project to widen the entire block of Walnut Avenue at one time. However, the city currently lacks the ultimate right-of-way to accommodate the ultimate widening along this segment of Walnut Avenue. Therefore, therefore, city staff recommends the, the church be granted an exemption from the Municipal Code requirements to construct frontage improvements. The church would still be required to dedicate right-of-way so that the full improvements can be constructed in the future. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, Jesus, and we're going through a general plan amendment now. Are we going to be studying Walnut to see if we really do want to widen that entire section?
Yes, that's correct. We're going to be studying Walnut Avenue, looking at the traffic circulation and the capacity of, of Walnut to determine if there is a need to widen the roadway, the roadway any further.
Because I know we have sections throughout our community where we have that sawtooth effect. We're looking now at some of the places where we widened. Maybe we shouldn't have widened them after all. Of course, once it's done, you can't exactly bring the property back out.
Right. So the general plan, I think, currently shows that at the ultimate condition, it would be, um, two to four lanes. At the current time, Walnut Avenue, I think, is just two lanes, I mean, one lane in each direction, basically.
Okay. Right. Thank you very much. Um, questions of staff or comments by council members? Walt, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say that I agree with staff and, uh, and as long as the gentleman dedicates the property, so in the future, if we have to come back and do it, we already have a dedication. It should work. And if we, if we do it now, we'll have a sawtooth effect, and it, it'll trap water, trap trash, and it'll just be, it'll be way worse than it is now without, without, uh, doing anything. So I agree with this staff.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chinakatongwachuku, and I'm the pastor of Potter's Wheel Assembly. And it is, Potter's Wheel Assembly is a young congregation that started in Chino Valley. And we've been in the city of Chino Hills for 13 years. And our congregation serves predominantly, uh, West African immigrants who live in the city of Chino and Chino Hills mostly. And it's been a pleasure and honor living and serving God in the city of Chino. Our worship place was in the Spectrum. Uh, it was a rental facility that we were forced to close down as a result of the pandemic. And, um, through the grace of God, we were able to, as, uh, the pandemic was ending, uh, secure this place in the city of Chino. I will say to you that we have extreme financial hardship that make it difficult for us to do the construction, uh, even make any commitment towards, uh, any future investment into this because we are a congregation of not more than 40 adults and children. So, and, um, we, we hope that the council would waive that requirement for us. I'll share with you, just a minute. So I'll share with you, um, at the end of this year, mortgage and loans that we have were in a deficit of more than $300,000 as a charge. And yet we have mortgage loan in addition to that. So we, you know, spoke to the congregation, and if we are not able to be granted this waiver, we will have to stay with the 5% improvement, which is, doesn't require us to do any of this. So we would, uh, really, um, love for you to seriously consider giving us the opportunity to continue to be part of this community where we have lived. My brother here has lived here in this area for 20.
Forty years.
Forty years. And, uh, so it's, um, we have many of our congregation who are in this area. We're not a lot of people, but we are invested in this community. And I believe that giving us the opportunity to be able to stay here will continue to make contribution, uh, to this community. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Well, as staff stated, it is our requirement to do so, but it makes no sense to just improve that small section of the street. It would cause more harm than it would good, so.
Yeah, I want to say thank you, Mayor. And we pray that, uh, the good Lord will, you know, make this possible for us. Because right now, we're paying mortgage. And again, we, to fellowship, we rented a, a place right there, DCS, on 55220 Riverside Drive. You know, why we pay mortgage and nobody's in the property? So we beg, you know, um, to grant us this waiver. We greatly, greatly appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Okay, seen none, then I would encourage a motion in a second, please. Motion from Mayor Pro Tem Lucio, second from Councilman Flores. And the item passes unanimously. Item number 14, Appropriation of Funds, ST 182 Public Improvements and Reimbursement Agreement for the Chino High School Reconstruction Project. This item is to appropriate $170,339.54 to ST 182 Public Improvements and Reimbursement Agreement for the Chino High School Reconstruction Program, or Project, rather. Our staff report will once again be provided by our Assistant City Engineer, Jesus Placencia.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. On January 5th, 2021, the city council approved a reimbursement agreement between the city and Chino Valley Unified School District for the design and construction of various off-site public improvements associated with the Chino High School Reconstruction Project. Uh, these public improvements include pavement rehabilitation, new curb and gutter, sidewalk, curb ramps, driveway, streetlights, and signing and striping along the perimeter of the high school. The city entered into this reimbursement agreement because some of the public improvements would be the financial responsibility of the city due to their location and/or scope. Uh, the public improvements that are the city's financial responsibility are primarily located on the outer edge or opposite end of all the perimeter streets fronting the high school. At the time the city entered into the reimbursement agreement, the city's total share of the cost was estimated to be $1,127,000, with approximately $90,000 of those costs to be utilized to cover design work. Capital Improvement Project Number ST-182 was also amended to include the Chino High School Reconstruction Project. As a result, the overall budget for ST 182 increased to $1,468,960.05, which accounts for other ancillary costs such as reimbursement of permitting, plan check, and other related fees that would be proportionately, proportionally shared between the city and the school district. Several factors associated with the curb ramp design have resulted in additional design costs that were not anticipate, not, were not anticipated prior to the approval of the cost estimate. Uh, these factors include the city's adoption of the policy on accessible pedestrian facilities on December 3rd, 2019, and the update to the California Building Code on July 1st, 2021, which increases the scope and complexity of the curb ramp design. Based on the city's policy of, on accessible pedestrian facilities, the number of curb ramps required to be constructed with the project increased from an initial estimate of 48 to 66. In addition, the ability to apply a typical directional curb ramp design at many of the intersections surrounding the school was constrained by, uh, available right-of-way and/or the location of existing, uh, public improvements relative to private property. For these reasons, the city and school district teams had to meet and confer on numerous occasions to ensure the, the proposed design could be ultimately approved by the city. Uh, the city's share of civil design costs from September 2019 to the close of fiscal year 2021, 2022 was $206,024.13, exceeding the initial projected estimate of $90,000. Additional design services are also anticipated through the, uh, project completion in the amount of $38,830. City council approval is needed to make payment on invoices received by the school district in fiscal year 2021, 2022, as well as any future invoices. Therefore, staff is requesting an appropriation from the general fund reserves for Project ST 182 in the amount of $170,339.54, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $15,485.41. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any one in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seen none, council comments or questions? Costs just keep going up, don't they? Okay, then I would entertain a motion in a second. Motion from Mayor Pro Tem Lucio, second from Councilperson Pocock. Item passes unanimously. Next is item number 15, Contract Amendment, RHA Landscape Architect Planners Incorporated. This item is to approve a professional services contract amendment to RHA Landscape Architect Planners Incorporated, Riverside, California, in the amount of $194,210 for construction management services. Our staff report this evening will be provided by our Assistant Project Coordinator, Mr. Keith Martinez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. RHA Landscape Architects and Planners Incorporated is a current consultant hired to perform design services for several city projects, including Modern Vista Park Public Right-of-Way, Old School House Museum barn and site improvements, and the Chino Rancho Park Development Projects. In addition to design services for these projects, staff requested a construction management proposal for the three projects previously mentioned to help streamline tasks such as construction scheduling, deliverables, construction progress, inspections, field reporting, construction coordination, and weekly reports. On September 28th, 2022, staff received a proposal for constructive management services from RHA Landscape Architects and Planners in the amount of $194,210. The current contract amount awarded to RHA is $1,191,040, bringing the new total contract amount to $1,385,250. Staff has requested city council to approve the contract amendment in the amount of $194,210 for the proposed services. In addition, staff has requested additional appropriation of $25,640 from the transportation fund, with a year-end transfer from the general fund reserves and increase the Modern Vista Park Public Right-of-Way Project PK 193 total budget to $2,616,203.42. The city attorney's office has reviewed all documents and found them to be in order. That concludes my report, and I would happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Keith. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seen none, council comments, questions? Okay, then I entertain a motion in a second. Motion from Councilperson Comstock, second from Councilperson Pocock. And item 15 passes unanimously. Item number 16, Amendment to Professional Services Agreement, East Side Water Treatment Facility Expansion and Brine Disposable, or Disposal Pipeline Design, WA 19C. This item is to appropriate $207,182 from the water fund with a corresponding increase to Project WA 19C and approve contract amendments and term extension to the Professional Services Agreement with TRC Engineers and Hazen and Sawyer. Staff report this evening will be provided by our Associate Engineer, Natalie Avila.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the audience. I'd like to revisit the progression of the East Side Water Treatment Facility tonight. The initial phases of the East Side plant were completed in 2016, which included ion exchange treatment technology to, to remove nitrate and perchlorate. And in late 2017, granular activated carbon filtration vessels were added to the treatment train to meet a new state regulation for the 123 TCP. The facility currently is capable of treating 3,500 gallons per minute by three of our groundwater wells. I'll point your attention to the slide that is displayed. That equipment is, uh, showing, is shown in the blue outline of the, um, bird's eye view of the site. And then the pictures above are those facilities at the time they were installed. Phase three is in, uh, construction of the plant expansion from the 3,500 to 7,000 gallons per minute. And the installation of the brine disposal pipeline for the brine waste produced by the ion exchange process has already been completed. The expansion project and brine line work were anticipated to be completed within 425 calendar days. As a result of various change orders, the time provided for completion in the contract has increased by approximately 180 contract days, extending the anticipated completion date to now February 2nd, 2023. The site is 90% complete. And you'll see the, uh, site outlined in orange of the site, uh, overall site view, um, and the new installation of the equipment. You can tell the GAC, the new GAC vessels that are at the end of the train there. Uh, they are the ones in bright green. And the ion exchange treatment, uh, in the upper left-hand corner is during the installation process. Both of these, uh, pieces of equipment are fully installed. And the, uh, the longest extension of the contract time was actually due to the procurement of some new tanks that were initially planned to be reused. But the inspection of these tanks identified numerous failures and were considered unsuitable. Hazen and Sawyer's scope of work did not initially include design to start well 16. Recently, staff inspected the existing condition of well 16 and found the additional repairs are necessary, including electrical and communications that were not part of the original design for the East Side Treatment Expansion Project. The proposed cost for the additional design effort for well 16, which includes projected construction phase engineering services, is $67,176. Staff recommends that the city council approve the term extension to the existing contract through June 30th, 2024, and amendment to the Design Professional Services Agreement with Hazen and Sawyer in a contract amount not to exceed $1,749,842. Additionally, TRC has been performing the necessary construction management and inspection services. However, in order to continue to handle the project through the extended construction schedule completion date, an additional $140,006 amendment to their contract is necessary. Staff recommends that the city council approve the fourth amendment to the Construction Management and Inspection Professional Service Agreement with TRC Engineers in a total contract amount not to exceed $1,826,634.86. Staff also recommends the appropriation of $270,182 from the Water Enterprise Funds to cover the amendments for the design and construction management contracts as outlined this evening. One other. One other progression that I'd like to share with you, if you look closely, you can actually see the ion exchange turntable equipment churning there. This shows a little bit more of the complete infrastructure that has been placed since the 2017, but it'll be identical to what we're placing now. The individuals that are in the picture are from the State Division of Drinking Water who visited the site, and we are working closely to amend our permit to operate the new equipment. The staff recommendations are displayed for your convenience, but this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Natalie. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on item number sixteen? Council comments or questions? I want to compliment you and the rest of our water staff. Many of the cities in our area have not been aggressive in handling the contaminants in our ground, and therefore have had to rely on imported water, and in the long run are going to be spending a whole heck of a lot more money than we are. This is a very, very expensive project, but without water, you don't have life, and we've been way ahead of the curve when it comes to taking care of our citizens' needs. We have incredible people in the Water Department in our public works area, and thank goodness for the expertise, especially in Dave Crossley. Without him, I don't I don't know. We probably wouldn't be as far advanced as we are, but thank you very much for bringing this item to us. It is expensive, but again, without water, you don't have life, and we know right now the drought is extremely serious. They're in the throes of reallocating the Colorado River with the seven states, the seven contracts. Thank goodness, we're not reliant on Colorado River because of its contaminants, but with the state water project and the tunnel not being built when it was expected to be built, and all of the complications and the drought, we're very, very lucky, we're very blessed to have the water facilities that we have. So, thank you for being on top of this, Natalie.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion in a second. Motion from Mayor Protam Lucio, second from Councilperson Comstock. I know it, my voice. And the item passes unanimously. Okay, item, what are we on next? Oh, next we have mayor and council reports. On with that, on Wednesday, October 19th, I attended the mayor's pre-breakfast, the Omnitrans Plans and Program Meeting, and also, along with other councilmembers, attended the Town Center at the Preserve groundbreaking ceremony. Long time in coming, that is going to be an absolutely phenomenal shopping center. It was very well-attended, the speakers were really good, we're going to get a Stater Brothers there. Apparently, they are in love with Chino, so we're very, very fortunate to have them in our community. It's going to be a very, very nice center, and I know the inhabitants at the Preserve are really looking forward to it. On Thursday, October 20th, I attended remotely the Advisory Committee, Water Master Advisory Committee Meeting. On Thursday, the 27th of October, I attended virtually the Water Master Maximum Benefit Workshop that they had, very, very interesting on handling the contaminants in our groundwater basin. Then the Water Master Board of Directors, and then Chino de Saltra Authority Finance Committee in the afternoon. On the 28th of October, I met with IEU A Board Member Paul Hofer to discuss items of mutual interest in the water world, and then last night, I did not go in, but I drove by the Spooktacular. It was absolutely phenomenal, the lines were long, I was asked Linda how many people she thought were there, and and the guestimates are eight thousand people were at Ayala Park. It was crazy busy, no parking, I mean absolutely no parking. So I want to thank all of the volunteers, I know the fire department was there with the booth, police department presence were there, as well as all kinds of city staff, vendors, they had carnival rides, it was just, it was an incredible, incredible event, which is typical of Chino, I have to say. It seems like everything we do comes off with a bang, right? We don't do anything halfway, we always do the best job we can, and I'm sure that that the people and their children really, really appreciated it because it was a very safe venue to attend. Mayor Protam Lucio.
Yes, thank you. I too, on the 19th, attended the groundbreaking for the Town Center at the Preserve. Like the mayor said, it's been long overdue, the residents are really, really excited for it. We're also anticipating there's going to be another shopping center across the street from that, so that's also exciting, but that's going to be coming in the in the near future. One of the individuals that I did meet was a classmate of Karen's, he's the owner of Ken Woods, he's actually a Don Lugo alumni, he was present, he just shared he was excited to come back home, bring this restaurant back to Chino, because he's a homegrown person, and he has one in Costa Mesa, this is going to be his second one, but everybody's excited to have them, and there's a bunch of different stores that are there. If you guys want to see the different people that have already signed a lease, then you can click onto the Lewis website, and they'll tell you all the all the businesses that have already confirmed that they're going to sign leases and open up there. On the 22nd, I, early in the morning, I went to go buy donuts, and when I was there, I was, I saw one of our community service members, and they were buying donuts for the community garden event that they were having on the 22nd, so I took my kids down there and my wife, and we had, it was a great event, it was small. One of the local businesses donated all the pumpkins, we carved pumpkins, of course, my wife's competitive, so of course, her pumpkin was allegedly the best, but, you know, the kids all had fun, but it was a great event, thank you for putting that together, but it was it was nice. Also, on the 22nd, I attended the College Park Chunk Retreat, because it was starting to rain at the end, we ended up having it indoors, but it was a good turnout, there was quite a few people, it was more than I expected, but it was good to see that the community's coming out there. On the 23rd, I attended the Harvest Festival at St. Paul the Apostle, and I saw the, you know, there I was getting ready to go eat, and then I see the the fire chief running along, trucking along with his five-mile run, so it made me feel bad, so I didn't eat what I wanted to eat, but I see that he's getting himself ready, because I think Chris continues to challenge him, so, you know, he's making sure that he's prepared in case something like that occurs, so. On the 24th, I attended a meeting with the city manager. On the 25th, I also had another meeting with trunk and van storage, and on the 28th, I attended the Preserve's Chunk Retreat at the Bridge, and I will say that that was a phenomenal turnout, a couple thousand kids were there, it really, and the creativity that people have to, you know, decorate their cars, I mean, one had it wrapped completely, looked like the, what's it called, the, say, yellow, those yellow figures, the minions, it looked like a minion car, and had, everybody was dressed like minions, and so when I looked at my trunk, and me and my wife, we said, you know, we need to be more creative, so I think next year, we'll be a little bit more creative, because now we know what to expect, and we know where the bar is set, so, but it was great turnout, it was great to be out there with the community and interacting with them. On the 31st, I actually, you know, I live in College Park, and in the area of College Park that I live in, it really gets no trick-or-treaters, I mean, we lay out a bucket out in the front, and it was still kind of full when we came back home, so I mean, we just, for some reason, we just don't get the amount of people that used to come out. But I was invited to go over to the Preserve, they said they have thousands of kids that show up there, and they were not lying, so the area that I went to in the Preserve, it was nonstop from, I think, 5:30 all the way almost until 9 o'clock, just thousands of people coming by, and kids, and costumes, it was, really reminded me of the way it was when we were kids, when we would go out trick-or-treating, and everybody was out, and families were out, and people were walking around, and and just that that neighborhood really came alive for that day, and it was really, really nice to see. On November 1st, today, I attended the Ontario State of the Airport Luncheon, and there was a couple big announcements that they had there. One is that they were actually going to, they're going to start building an international terminal. The terminal's going to be called Diane Feinstein Terminal, because I guess Diane Feinstein was instrumental in getting the airport back from control of of LA and bringing it back to Ontario, so they're going to create a new international airport or international terminal there, and they're looking at different, I guess, airlines that are going to be flying directly out of Ontario. Also, one of the things that they also announced was that we have now a fourth cargo shipping company that will be moving to the Ontario Airport, which is DHL. So they said, we're the only one, the only airport that that has four, which we have Amazon Prime, we have DHL, now we have FedEx, and then UPS. But they did say that the reason, one of the reasons that they were able to sustain the pandemic was the fact that they had cargo, because not a lot of people were traveling during that time, and if it wasn't for cargo, they probably would have went under, but they were pretty happy at the fact that they have DHL now, but they're looking forward to continuing to expand, not just with that terminal, but maybe because, well, the land that they have there, maybe continuing to grow more. They said that this year, they will have six million people that have flown out of Ontario, which is larger than they had pre-pandemic, which was, and even before 2007, that was the largest amount of people that they've had utilizing the airport, so they were pretty excited about the growth that's occurring there. And to staff, I just want to thank you, like, you know, you guys went went out, you reached out to to the folks online, and you actually awarded somebody the Halloween haunted house. I looked at it, it was a very, 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 very nice house, but also, a lot of people turned in pictures, and they're raising the bar too, because I, we're a little competitive, but we didn't decorate as much as we normally do, but but it was nice to see. On, and I just want to share with the community, especially the community in the Preserve, on November 10th, we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony for the second school in the Preserve. So, all the talks and everything that about that second school, it will be happening, in fact, we will be breaking ground on it on November 10th, so everybody, we're excited about it, we're happy that it's finally happening. I know that that area's really, really needed a second school for a long, long time, so I'm glad that we're starting to see some things in that community that's starting to bring some some enthusiasm and stuff. And then I also want to thank our staff for, it was really, really instrumental to to come in and start looking at potential settlement agreements with some of these developers on our ADA, because now that means we're going to start accepting some of these projects, these streets will start getting capped, and we'll start moving forward, and that's something that we really, really needed to do for a long time, so I'm happy that we're moving in that direction. It's long overdue, and I appreciate you guys' hard work and efforts. And then, I want to have my condolences out to the Conley family. To lose a child that early, I couldn't imagine, I have two daughters of my own, and it would be devastating, but my heart, my prayers go out to you, to the family, and and may God bless you during these troubling times, and that's all I have.
Question about the the new freight hauler at the airport. We used to have an agreement with Ontario Airport where they would not fly directly over our community, they were supposed to turn and go down like Euclid, and they don't abide by that anymore. So I'm hoping, I know our staff has had some some meetings with Ontario, but we need to put pressure to try to get them to reinstate those restrictions that they used to have, because it, as everyone that lives in Chino now, that's underneath those flight paths, they know it gets pretty loud and pretty scary, those those planes fly pretty low when they're heavily burdened, so hopefully, we can get those meetings started again, Linda. And I know last time, it took us going back to Washington DC and working with previous Congressman Jerry Lewis to get the the FFA to instill those restrictions, and I'm hoping that we can get those reinstated.
One of the other things that they said, that they're the only airport that is also going to allow, you got to go onto the website, you got to apply, and they said the approval process is pretty simple, but they're going to allow people to actually go into the terminal and into the 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 area past TSA to actually go either walk your your family members to the plane, or actually go into the terminal and wait for your family members to arrive. So that's one of the new, that's one of the new things that they're rolling out, they said if you want to start looking and and applying to be able to be cleared, and and so their big push is obviously, they have some new shops in there, some new restaurants, and they want people to go there and and actually eat and and shop there, and then also, obviously, see their family members, but that's a new thing that they're pushing out, it's it's passed, so now it's just a matter of people applying to get that clearance, and then actually going there to the terminals. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Comstock.
Mayor, I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, I was actually out of the state last weekend, I was very disappointed to not be able to attend the groundbreaking ceremony with Lewis, I was actually in the dentist chair getting a tooth repaired on that day. But I do have some unfinished business, in addition to just the other meetings that have been mentioned here. Mayor, I did see the 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 volume of people at the at the Spooktacular, I didn't go in either, but it was a great event, and thank you to staff. Staff's doing a lot of good work for us right now, it's already been mentioned, not just the water, but the strategic plan. Mayor, I was actually one of the original members of our first strategic plan under Chief Hernandez, so I know the amount of work that goes into that, so thank you for that, because I do believe that that document's going to guide us into the future and help provide us with a lot of direction moving forward. So Mayor, what I do want to do is save some of my time for Walp, I had some unfinished business with chocolate cupcakes from the last city council meeting, so here they are as as promised, Mayor, it was, I missed out on National Chocolate Cupcake Day, but I did tell you I would bring them, there's never, you know, back to the next meeting, so that with that, I'll keep my comments short tonight, so you can pass out those cupcakes, I even have enough for you, Angela, if you want some.
Will do.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 19th of October, I also attended the Town Center at the Preserve, had a great time there, and again, happy to see that come to, you know, come to flourish. On the 21st of October, I attended a Chino PD softball game, and it was a special Olympics fundraiser, and I tell you, I had an amazing time there, and just a quick fact about that, we won one, lost one, and it's just the weirdest thing, the the team we beat, LAPD, they made it into the playoffs, but we didn't make it into the playoffs, we beat them, and it was the weirdest thing, but guess it was based off of runs. Anyways, had a great time there. On the 24th of October, I attended the Sir Optimus Spaghetti Dinner and Bingo, had a great time there, it was a great show, show out, and had the opportunity to serve some spaghetti with alongside Councilmember Walt Pocock and Charlene King. On the 27th of October, I visited the Lions Club and had a chance to present a possible service project that I discussed with Linda earlier during our one-on-one, so I'm excited to see that possibly come to the north part of Chino. On the 4th, or today, alongside other councilmembers, I attended the Ontario's State of the Airport, and I kind of want to close out with giving some recognition to some future events that are happening in the city. This Friday, the 4th, as was mentioned earlier, is the Chino Valley Leadership Collab, you know, the first day is the kickoff day, and the next day on the 5th, we do have the Kids Entrepreneurship, you know, pitch competition, so I'm I'm excited and looking forward to that. And on that same day, on on the 5th, is the Philharmonic Festival at Portuguese Hall, so if you guys have time, it starts at 11:00 AM, and it's going to be, I'm looking forward to that as well. Two last things, I have someone in the audience named Edward Montalvo. Edward Montalvo, I invited him here for two reasons, and I'll connect him with staff later on after the meeting, but we, you know, today was, we, at the start of the, at the start of our meeting here, we had the, let me see here, our Purple Heart City Proclamation, and I met Edward about a couple weeks ago while I was door knocking, and during our conversation, I found out that Edward is a two-time Purple Heart recipient, so just want to say congratulations, and, you know, thank you for your services, and we'll, again, I'll connect you with our staff later on, I'll handle what we're going to handle. And last but not least, I just want to end my comments and by giving my condolences and prayers to the Conley family, and, you know, may may God be with you during these troubled times, and may God put patience, and just love on your guys' hearts. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mayor, Chris, do you want to cover your your basketball game on the 11th as well, the SoCal Heat?
That's right. On the 11th, Don Lugo High School, we're going to be playing SoCal Heat, and that's, Chino PD is the frontrunner in that, and then you got me, not the starter, I'll be on the bench, I'm coming off of the bench, and I'll put my five minutes in, no, I'm kidding, but I, it's going to be a great time, we ask that you guys come out to support and just, you know, have a great grand old time there, watch some good old basketball, you know, if you're a Laker fan, then I'll tell you, you're going to enjoy this game more than you would watching a Laker game right now.
I'll be the heckle to the cops for you, Chris.
I love it, thank you, Karen.
We're going to need to- We're going to need to have more information about that basketball game if we're going to attend. Councilmember Polcock.
Thank you. On the 19th, I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast. And 20th, I met with the city manager. And on 27th, I attended the YMCA Board of Directors virtually. And on 31st, on the 29th, I went to the, attended the Trunk or Treat event at Crosspoint Church. And it was very well attended, like, seems like all of the Halloween's events we've had this, this year have been very well attended. Like people, seems like people are pent up and want to get out. So it's, it's great to see all the people out. And on the 31st, I attended the Spooktacular, and the same story. It was just jam-packed with, with folks. It's a great, great event. Linda said, city manager said that we might have to double the, double the budget next year because it's going to be so big. After Spooktacular, then I had to run home and prepare my, my house for my, my trick-or-treaters, which I had a ton of kids. It was, it was amazing, a ton of kids. Last year, I had probably six total. And this year, I, it was amazing. It was amazing. And let's see, today, I attended the State of the Airport with Mayor Pro Tem Lucio and Council Chris Flores. And that concludes my story. Thank you.
You know, it's really strange. We, I think last year, we got one trick-or-treater, and that was because Bob begged him to come back. They were walking up the street going somewhere, and he goes, don't you want to come to our house? So he gave him a whole bunch. This year, we didn't get any. But, you know, our properties are far apart, and I think people don't want to walk anymore. If they can't go directly house to house, it's like, takes too much energy. And I failed to mention that I attended the PD Open House on the 29th. And that was fantastic. And Chief Williams, I'm sorry, but I'm sure we had more in attendance than you did on your house. Oh, yeah, we did, I'm sure. With the competition. But it was really nice.
I also attended the.
Yeah, Walt was there, too. Saw him, too. And that was great. I mean, gosh, it was, it was very, very, very well attended. I loved the haunted house that they did, all the different booths and the demonstrations and stuff. So that was really good. City Manager Reich, your report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I really want to thank you for recognizing the Strategic Plan Work Group because as Councilmember Comstock said, that's a lot of work. And to do that from 2019 and still moving forward today, they put in a lot of work on top of their regular jobs. They're dedicated. We have such a great group of people who really care about this city, these employees, and they want to make this the best place to work. So I want to thank the committee for that as well, and I want to thank you for that recognition. I'd also like to, I know that our audience can see our values up on the soffit. And that's just to remind all of us that this is, this is our values, City of Chino, and this is how we serve. So we put that up last week through the Strategic Plan Committee, so we're really proud of that. I'd also like to thank the Community Services Department. You've all talked about the Spooktacular. It was amazing, bigger than it's ever been. And I think it will continue to get bigger and bigger. People want that type of event, something safe, something where they can go and it can be trusted. Thank you to the police department for always coming and keeping us safe. Public Works for keeping the location safe. And Fire, you're at all of our events, and we really appreciate that because it is this community that makes this place such a great place. And without all of our partners, it would not be the same. So I want to thank everyone for that. I want to thank the council for your support for our events, and they will just continue to get bigger and bigger. And that's all I have tonight.
Can you imagine, this used to be at the, at the Spectrum, remember?
Before the Spectrum, it was at the museum.
At the museum, can you imagine?
We outgrew the museum, we outgrew the NAC, where it went to NACs. Then it went to the Spectrum, and now it's, pretty soon, it's going to be the whole park.
Yeah, I think so, too. City Attorney Galante.
Thank you, Mayor. No legal report tonight.
Nothing at all? You don't have anything to say?
I could probably talk about some legislation, but it would depress everyone, so I'd rather.
Never mind, Fred. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. And I want to thank our community for coming out on Saturday to our Second Annual Halloween-Themed Community Open House. It was a great success, and we appreciate everybody's support for that. October also closes out our Pink Patch Project in, in recognition and, and support for those who are fighting breast cancer and hoping to look for a cure. And November now launches our No Shave November campaign, where we're bringing, bringing awareness also to, to cancer and specifically to the fact that many people, through their cancer treatment, lose their hair. So we're growing out our hair during this time. And of course, all the, all the money goes back to cancer research that, that our department raises for that. So you probably can't tell from this far away, but I am starting to grow it out, and we'll see, we'll see how it looks by the, the end of the month.
Looking a little shaggy.
Thank you.
Well, it was interesting Saturday, Officer Chinis.
Yes.
He either grows a beard incredibly fast, or he got a head start on everybody because he's quite furry.
He is, he is. Thank you.
Chief Williams.
Well, I don't have anything official. I do have two things I want to say, but I did want to make myself available for any questions. Obviously, there's many things that are still going on related to ambulances and whatnot. First thing, again, unofficial, you know, my, the person that's like a father to me was in, was in law enforcement. He was a police chief in Monobello. So I do look up to law enforcement like my big brother and always appreciate that. However, going to the Chamber of Commerce, we did get on base first. You might have hit the homerun, but we got there first. And then to Councilmember Comstock, continue to bring lots and lots of treats and feed them to Mr. Flores. If I'm going to have any chance in any of this conversation we're having, I need to fatten him up, and I need to keep my exercise. So have one of those. And again, always thank you very much. And if there's any questions, but otherwise, there's no other report for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are adjourning in memory of Addison Conley and do have her family in prayers. Our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 15, at 7:00 with closed session at 6:00 if needed. With that, we are adjourned.